Mr. Chairman, this is Teresa. Staff is ready to begin.
Thank you, Teresa. Welcome, everyone, to the March 24th, 2021 special meeting of the Town of Hilton Head Island's Planning Commission. And are we in compliance with FOIA, Teresa?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here by phone.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Christian?
Here. And I want to welcome, I see several of our council members are on the line as well. Tamara Becker, David Ames, Glenn Stanford, and Tom Lennox, welcome to the meeting. I will have to leave the meeting at 3:45 because Mark has arranged for COVID shots down in Buckwalter Parkway in Bluffton, and I'll be zooming out of here to get my second shot. So I will be handing the gavel over if we go past 3:45 to Vice Chairman Levon Stevens at that time. Approval of the agenda. Do staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Alan?
Second.
Steven, second. Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. O'Neil?
Approve.
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. All right, we have the minutes for the March 3rd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alan. Levon, second. Rather than have Teresa call the roll in the interest of time, if there aren't any objections, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Teresa, public comments and appearance by citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comments concerning agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the open town hall portal. There were no comments submitted on the portal for this meeting. Citizens were also provided the option to give public comment during the meeting by phone. However, there were no requests to give public comment by phone.
Thank you, Teresa. All right, we have no unfinished business. And under new business, we have a recommendation from the CIP committee regarding the proposed CIP fiscal year priority projects that we are going to make a recommendation in some form today to Town Council. And we are going to receive a presentation by Jeff Buckaloo, who is the town engineer. And I believe, Sean, were you going to do a brief introduction as well before Jeff steps in?
Yes, sir, if that pleases the commission.
Hey, Sean, you're on.
Okay, I boiled my comments down, Peter, for time purposes to 25 slides. And, no, I'm just joking.
We really appreciate that, Sean.
That's better than 25 minutes.
All right.
It's endemic, Sean.
I'll keep my comments to just a minute or two. I just wanted to let the commission, the full commission, know what we had talked about at CIP committee, just for the overall CIP process. What we've done, what staff has done in the past few weeks is really sort of deconstruct the CIP and rebuild it in a way that it makes more sense across our organization. Hopefully, it makes more sense as we work throughout the rest of the year for the CIP committee, Planning Commission, Council, and the community. So we've really kind of blown it up and reformatted it and are repackaging it for council discussion during the budget. And then we will come back with the CIP committee and do some more work later this year to streamline project lists, to kind of do a vetting of what needs to be carried forward in those projects that we may have been carrying for 30 or more years and just don't need to ride along anymore. So thanks to the CIP committee for your thoughtful input and discussion over the past couple of meetings. I know you've got a priority list in front of you, and hopefully you can session today and recommend a final list for council. We're already trying to put together pieces for funding and funding capacity to match up with the priority projects. And just let you know that that will continue after your recommendations and work with the town manager to recommend a budget to Town Council. I want to turn it over to Jeff. Jeff will answer any questions you have or any details you need on the project specifically. Then we also have Jennifer Ray on the call. I know she's the heavy hitter related to the parks, significant parks component of our CIP, and so anyone on the team can answer questions if you have them. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Sean. And I sat in on the CIP committee member, and I know that several of the members of that committee are on the call. And I suggested to staff that when we take another look at this, that we lay it out possibly over a five-year period, just so we don't have a rolling list that just seems to roll with the same list from year to year, and we pick off one or two, rather than to lay them out with a funding mechanism over a five-year period. I think we'd be more successful in getting things done by laying it out in that manner, and that was just a suggestion. So with that caveat, Jeff, you're on.
All right, thank you, Peter, and good afternoon, commissioners. What I like to do, you know, I'll go through the list today that's in your packet of all these projects, you know, per the categories we've chosen. And at the end of it, would like you to approve that list for consideration to Town Council as part of the CIP budgeting process.
And Jeff, before you start, Mark and Steve, you were on that call, and I apologize if I missed someone who was also on that call. This list was recommended by the CIP committee to the full Planning Commission. Am I correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
All right, I would like to share my screen if everyone could see that. Can you see the list?
Not yet.
There we go.
There it is.
Okay, very good. And yeah, I will walk down this list, Peter, per the categories we've chosen. These are major infrastructure categories, and the first one is pathways. And under this category, we have programmatic enhancement. So this is not a specific site or location, an individual project. This is more island-wide and things we wish to do to make the pathways better and safer, et cetera. The first one is accessibility and safety enhancements. These may be, you know, better signage, landings, et cetera, intersections. We work with the Bicycle Advisory Committee and staff assessments, inspections, to see areas that may need improvements in that regard. The second one is crosswalk lighting. We installed lights, overhead streetlights at the Yacht Cove Crosswalk last year. And to move forward with a program, we would select the North Ridge-Palmato Parkway crosswalks next, and then Burks Beach Road after that. The third project in this category would be crosswalk consistency enhancements. This is something we've talked about along the 278 corridor, and it's mainly looking at the points of interaction between pedestrians and bicyclists and vehicles, crosswalks, turn lanes, better signage, sightlines, et cetera. This could be a roadway category, but we parked it in pathways for this year. But we would look at the entire US 278 William Hilton Parkway corridor and assess and make whatever enhancements, improvements we need to. And if you would like to comment or ask questions as I go, please do so. The next subcategory here is new pathway segments. This would be brand-new infrastructure or reconstructing pathways. US 278 Business Eastbound at the Village of Wexford, there is a crosswalk, the New Orleans Road now, but no pathway facility on the eastern side going towards Seapines. We would build a new pathway down to the Arrow Road intersection. We surveyed and began design on this project several years ago, and it was shelved due to no funding for construction. But we would resurrect that, dust off the design, and continue on with that. The next project is Main Street. This is a private road. This is the portion from Whooping Crane to Wilborn, currently privately held, but the road owner has offered dedication of the right-of-way to the town. And should we accept that, we think this would be a high-priority pathway segment we should pursue. Right now, there's a small, short segment of concrete sidewalk, only five foot wide. We would build asphalt pathways of proper width and would connect to US 278 pathways at the Merchant Street, Museum Street, and Central Avenue. The next pathway project is also a privately-held pathway. This is Shelter Cove Lane from near the Kroger gas station and would go back to Shelter Cove Park. Shelter Cove Lane is a private right-of-way. There is currently a private pathway that is too narrow for current standards. We would put in a proper width pathway, make sure the slopes and crosswalks, et cetera, all meet current standards and have to acquire an easement to do that work. The next project is Woodhaven Drive, Woodhaven Lane. This is in the vicinity of Cordello Parkway and Pope Avenue. We would call this Phase One of the project known as the Boggy Gut Pathway that the Circle-to-Circle Committee recommended. The much larger project, Boggy Gut Pathway, would run from Cordello Parkway to Office Park Road between USCB and the Harris Teeter Shopping Center. The next pathway, US 278 Eastbound, this would run from the Shelter Cove Lane intersection at the new stoplight at the Sheriff's Office up to Matthews Drive across from Follyfield Road. This would have overlap with the Chaplin Linear Park project, of course, but we felt it warranted designation as a standalone pathway project. The next one beyond that, continuing north and westward from US 278 at Matthews Drive up to the intersection with Follyfield Road at the McDonald's and Fort Oil Plaza Shopping Center. No facilities right there. This will be a brand-new pathway project. And the next one on the list would be 278 Eastbound also, from Gardner Drive to Jarvis Park Lane. Again, no pathway facility exists. This would help the town complete its goal of having double-barrel pathways on Willard-Nutten Parkway. Beyond that, we have Lagoon Road. The current pathway only runs from Pope Avenue to Avacet. We would continue from Avacet around through the residential neighborhoods to North Forest Beach Drive, then Singleton Beach Road. We would continue this pathway from Chapin Park towards the beach along this DOT road. Arrow Road, there is an offset pathway back into the power line easement, but several folks still continue to ride out along Arrow Road proper. So we would look at a pathway along one side of Arrow Road, and a connecting pathway, Archer Road, would connect Palmetto Bay Road to Arrow Road. And Jonesville Road, this is a long dead-end road through residential neighborhoods that we would have put pathway on one side of the road. So if there are any questions or comments about the pathway category, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Why don't we hold the comments until we go through the roll when Jeff finishes his total presentation? Go ahead on to the next category, Jeff.
All right, yes, sir, very well. Under the roadway category, Main Street, as I mentioned earlier, the private portion from Whooping Crane to Wilborn. The offer of dedication has been made, and we have received financial records of the road owner, the POA. And so this road, if it becomes a public road, we would go in and rehabilitate the road. There are a lot of segments of broken curb, root upheaval, fell pavements, et cetera. So we would rehabilitate the road, look at the traffic signing, et cetera, and bring that up to current standards. The second roadway project is median left-turn lanes, where we may need to extend the left turn due to queuing and stacking needs, try to get motorists to keep from rutting out the shoulder and driving into the medians. Only three locations there, but this is a relatively simple project. Road project number three, this is a program, dirt road acquisition and paving. First part of any of these projects is acquisition of a public right-of-way. And so we are currently working on Mitchellville Road and Pinefield Road, legal work defining who has legal rights to the road right-of-way. And we are in contact with the adjacent owners on Mitchellville. What we would propose to do in the new year, the next batch of roads, Alice Perry and Horse Sugar are in the Fish Hall-Mitchellville area. These two are connected. Would make sense to do them both at the same time, the public engagement, the legal work, surveying, et cetera. And then Amelia Drive off of Squire Popper. Another thing we'd like to do under this program is to re-engage property owners on past acquisition efforts. I've got a list of the roads here, Aiken, Alfred, Kobia, Murray, Outlaw. We had tried in the past to seek acquisitions. If the rightful property owners would donate public right-of-way, we would pursue road projects in those neighborhoods. Those attempts failed, but we have revised the LMO such that density rights are grandfathered, is the best way to say it, and those rightful owners may be more inclined to donate right-of-way. The last two roads under this project category are Dillon Road at 278 and Follyfield Road at 278. We would be improving the approach. At Dillon Road, we would add a right-turn lane so to reduce the queue and allow folks turning right to move on if safe to do so. And at Follyfield Road, Caraba is a similar type of project. The approach now is three lanes, left turn through and right turn, but it is a very, very short segment, and so we would lengthen that approach. And moving on to parks, the Mid Island Track, the former Planters Road Golf Course, that would be the number-one project we would get moving on planning and concept development. We are already surveying that property. We have surveyors in the field right now collecting data for that future design. Chaplin Linear Park, this was an old TIF project that we are going to resurrect and move on. Again, we are updating survey data on that project as we speak. The next two projects are the Patterson Family Park and the Taylor Family Park. Patterson Park is on Marshland Road. This is a town property on the marsh across from Alex Patterson Drive. This would be a neighborhood park, picnic shelter, recreation area, et cetera. Taylor Family Park is located off of Wild Horse and would be a similar-type park. Major park master planning efforts. These are existing parks, Chaplin Park and Crossings Park, longstanding parks that we would wish to hire a consultant, revisit the master planning efforts, see how we can improve, renovate these major parks in our inventory. And we have also existing parks and recreation facility improvements. Park upgrades are smaller-scale projects we take on. Picnic Shelter at Barker Field Extension, Playground at Jarvis Park. And from the Parks and Rec Committee, a request for football goalposts and a scoreboard at a football, youth football field location to be determined. The last two in this category are the Island Recreation Center and Coastal Discovery Museum. Both have submitted facility improvements they wish to undertake in the coming year. At the REC Center, this includes a PA system, a heat pump for the pool, et cetera, just to keep the facility up to current standards and things that Frank says we need to get done. Same thing at the Discovery Museum. These are mostly building improvements at the museum. The next category is existing facilities. This Arts Campus, we would take on a master planning effort, hire a consultant, see what needs to be done to improve that campus area in the Shelter Cove area. And the other one is public facilities and infrastructure beautification and enhancements. I know that may sound a bit vague, but what we're looking to do there is the highly-visible areas. This may be public parking areas, roundabout landscaping, et cetera. But those public areas that are highly visible, that we need to make better, do better with landscaping, et cetera, that would be what this category would fulfill. New facilities, we have a fire hydrant expansion. This is a running project where we coordinate with the PSD and our fire rescue to improve our coverage of fire protection by installing new hydrants. And the last category is beach management and maintenance. Ongoing beach management and monitoring, of course. We collect survey data. We may need to install sand fence, dune plantings, et cetera. And the project itself is the next renourishment project, where we will need funding for the survey design and later the permitting. And that's it.
That's quite a comprehensive list, Jeff. All right, why don't we do this? Teresa, if you would go down the roll and in order, call these commissioners, maybe they have a question or a comment for Jeff, please do so at that time. Teresa?
Yes, sir. Mr. O'Neil?
No comments. I reviewed it at the Capital Improvement Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Alfred?
Yes, a few comments. As Mark and the other members of the CIP committee know, I did submit prior to the CIP committee meeting a two-page memo to Jeff reviewing the various proposals from the perspective which I have as a longtime member of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, now BikeWalk Hilton Head Island, under which I did for many, many years review the annual bike auto crash statistics that Darren has prepared and came up with some recommendations. And I also come at it from having headed and continued on the governing board of the Kicking Asphalt Advice Club and the Hilton Head Biking Ambassador Program. I wanted to thank Jeff for having consulted the Bicycle Advisory Committee in connection with putting together his original recommendations. And as I said, I had a page or two of comments on them, which Jeff has taken account of in the recommendations that he came back to the CIP committee meeting on March 11th with, and that I fully concur with the recommendations that Jeff has made with respect to the pathway improvements.
Thank you, Steven.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, excuse me. First of all, when we talk about the REC Center, I will need to recuse myself from any discussion there or vote regarding the REC Center CIP. I do want to ask that in the future going forward, that with the presentation, if it's possible to have a timeframe as to when some of these were proposed. We've got a history of not pushing projects through fast enough. We let them sit on the back burner, and they really, some of them need to be pushed forward. You know, the bicycle safety aspect and the pathway safety and the pedestrian safety is one of those items that need to be, you know, pushed, and we don't need to keep that on the back burner anymore. We are fortunate that we haven't had anything worse happen than, you know, than what could have happened here in the past couple of years. I think everything on here is great, but I just want to make certain that as we go forward, we're not putting projects off that need to be on there. And I think by having a timestamp as to when they were proposed would help us to make certain that those projects get executed in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, yeah. Just a couple of questions or comments. Thank you, Jeff. That looks like a very comprehensive list, and I know the CIP committee has done some work on. Jeff, can you tell me a little bit more about the Burks Beach extension of that pathway and what's going on in that area?
You're speaking of where there's a parking prohibition now?
Well, just, I just want to be clear on what's being done there in the Burks Beach area.
Well, what we've had on the list was an overhead crosswalk lighting. You know, we had overhead streetlights at Yacht Cove at that crosswalk, and the next ones we are proposing would be North Ridge at the Shopping Center and Palmetto Parkway. And then beyond that, I think the next highest priority would be the Burks Beach Road crossing. But that was only the crosswalk at US 278 and Burks Beach Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the Mid Island Track, how large is that project? How, that's a pretty big track.
The area of the parcel?
Yes.
Do not know that offhand. Jennifer Ray knew it last time. She got it exactly right.
I think it's 103 acres, 100 and around that.
Yeah, I was gonna, 103 is what sticks in my head. Is that what I said last time? It's about that.
And what's going to happen there? What's being planned for that area?
What came out of the work with the community and the Parks and Rec Commission was to look at that park with a balance of active and passive recreation. So a lot of leisure trails, but also potentially some soccer fields. We are getting ready to release an RFQ because council wanted us to look at that area, also the larger area, as a redevelopment strategy to include the Opportunity Zone, you know, North Ridge, all of that, that area around the Mid Island Track, and incorporate those ideas in as we're planning a park for that area.
And so you have gotten some good input from the community?
We have, yes. Last fall, we held some open park days. We also did a survey and held some Blue Jeans, you know, virtual town hall meetings and got some good input. And then the Parks and Rec Commission looked at that in January and made a recommendation for a program for that park. But just because we've gotten some good input so far doesn't mean the input's done. The next phase will include extensive community input and gathering from other stakeholders as well.
I recall some time ago that this track was even mentioned or considered for a possibility of some kind of a facility like performing arts or something like that. Is there's going to be something like that planned on that track?
You mean something like the scale of the art center, like an enclosed? And that hasn't come up lately. We have talked about potentially outdoor space to complement what happens at Shelter Cove and Calligne, but to not replace those as outdoor event space. But right now, that wasn't a recommendation. It's possible, as we hire a consultant, that any number of things could come back up, but that's not on the table today.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm just trying to find more places for my band to play, you know? Thank you, Jennifer. The Taylor Family Park, Jeff, you said that's off of Wild Horse Road?
Yes.
Yeah, what's the exact location of that? I'm sorry I wasn't in on the CIP meeting.
It's a vacant parcel up near Gun Tree Road. I forget the address right now.
And it's right after you turn onto Wild Horse on the left there?
Yeah.
From Gun Tree, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's the same piece that I'm thinking about as well. Okay. I didn't hear any mention of anything with the Mitchellville Park. Is there any plans or discussion or anything going on in coordination with what's happening with Mitchellville?
Mitchellville developed their own, well, their master plan, a business plan, and they are moving through the execution of that. We don't have anything programmed in our, in the town CIP. We did just negotiate an update to the agreement with Mitchellville for some funds toward operational costs that we intend to consider as part of the upcoming budget, but no capital improvements from the town, in the town CIP for Mitchellville at this time.
Yeah, yeah, okay, very good. Really proud of the work that's going on down there in Mitchellville, and appreciate the support from the town as well. And the last question or item I have is about the fire hydrant program. As Mr. Perry stated earlier, I want to make sure that this was something that I know was brought up in our task force meeting, and just trying to see where we are with that. And I know there's working with the PSD and getting some good coverage for the areas that are not covered at this time. Can you speak? Can you speak to where we are in that part, that process?
What we, we put forth 50,000 a year and the PSD puts forth 50,000 a year. And so, you know, fire marshal and fire chief look at areas where hydrants are needed to expand coverage. But this is a recurring project that we've been doing for several years now. And we continue to fund and further expand the hydrant coverage.
Yeah, and I think again, from our task force, we were able to discover some areas that were not being covered, people having some challenges and incurring some expense because they have to be responsible for tying into a fire hydrant. So I'm just curious about that program. I'd like to maybe have you or maybe Pete come back and refresh the task force on where we are with, with that program. So I do appreciate that on the list as well and moving it forward. Those are all of my questions and comments for now. Thank you, good work.
Thank you, Levon.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Jeff, I have a couple of thoughts regarding the new parks area. I understand there are passive parks and active parks. I think I have a pretty good idea of the difference. But do we have some sort of a formula with regard to spending town money on, on parks? My, the comments that I get from folks in my area down here, you take, for example, the Cunt Rose Park at the corner of New Orleans and Pope. I don't know what the town spent on that park. But in terms of usage by either residents or tourists, it's virtually nonexistent. And I just wondered, do we have a formula for what we're going to spend on a new park versus the usage we expect by residents and tourists?
Do you want me to take that one, Jeff?
Yes, please.
The town doesn't have a specific formula, but we do have recommendations in the recently committed, recently completed and adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan that speaks to level of service and a good balance of active and passive, like you mentioned, Mr. Scanlon, throughout the community to make sure all areas of our community, people have access to recreation. And so it's not a specific per capita recommendation. It, it could be translated to that probably. It, but some communities do it that way, but we don't necessarily have a funding, a, a set formula for funding parks and recreation. I know that it, it seems like not a lot of people use that park. It is intended as a passive park. And there are quite a few people that use it, you know, to walk and stop there and have lunch, you know, on their, on their workday or, you know, pass through. And also just visually, it's a beautiful corner on a major corridor on the island. So there is that benefit that it brings as well. Not every park is going to be programmed or have activities that would draw a significant number of people to it.
The reason I think it's a passive park is because everybody goes right past it. The, I just, I would just say in, in, in new parks, it's one thing to put up goalposts or football field where people, children are going to be playing. I'm all for that sort of thing. But I think in terms of passive parks, spending money on passive parks other than a few trees and a few shrubs, the kind of thing, we build a, some sort of a cement gazebo there. I think that was a waste of money frankly. And I just would prefer we not do that in other places and use the money for things that are going to be used by the populace and our tourists. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I just got a question about the passive family and Taylor Family Parks. Could you just elaborate, elaborate more on what kind of park you're going to put there acreage wise? Both of those parks are?
I don't have the acreage in front of me, but right now, just what's on the book is to have a neighborhood park. Before those are detailed design and approved and ready for construction, we will engage the community on what they might want. The Taylor property is smaller and likely will be able to handle a small playground, maybe a picnic shelter, a couple of parking spots, but geared more toward people in that neighborhood being able to walk there with their kids or grandkids and sit and have something close to them. With the Patterson Park, because it is on, it's a little bit bigger parcel, it is on the water. And so at a minimum, I think, I don't, I don't think we can have water access, but definitely visual access to the water and that connection. But that piece may be able to accommodate more uses, more recreation uses for that community, for that neighborhood as well. But again, Mr. Campbell, we'd be reaching out to the community to find out exactly what they want to see happen there before drawing up those plans.
That's it.
Anything else, John?
No, that's it.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, I will make my comments and then Levon, I will turn the gavel over to you and go get vaccinated. The pathways are enjoyed by both the tourists and the, and the, the residents of, of, of the entire island as a, a real asset. And, you know, putting a priority on those paths is, is important, is important to me. They're very, very well used and they're used not only as recreation, you know, they're going to be transportation at some point. If we allow, you know, the electrified scooters and other devices, you know, on them. I don't know if the, if the town is going to weigh on, weigh in on that in the future on that particular use, but they will serve as a, a network of, of transportation. The one that's always been near and dear to my heart is, is Main Street, which has been on the, the docket for some time. You know, I believe that is a, a critical safety issue because that feeds youngsters who walk to the Hilton Head Public School Campus. And, you know, that road is in abysmal shape. We have folks that we ask to turn over the right of way and we will take over the road and improve it and pave it. Here we have a conundrum where we have a, a ownership that is very much willing to turn it over. And unfortunately, they have not done a stellar job of maintaining that road because it is their private responsibility. However, that road serves as a, very much a public right of way to move traffic to the school campus and also off of Route 278. So, you know, I, I would hope the staff and the town council will take a, a hard look at that conundrum and error on the side of, of safety and move that project along that's been sitting there for, for many, many years. My last comment is, is the, the same as I, I started with. We have a very long laundry list of very, very worthy projects that we could never accomplish in one year or fund in one year. And they really need to be laid out on a priority basis, both for funding and just to get done over a five-year period. And I would hope the staff would take a look at that and work with the CIP committee to come up with that, that type of plan. And with those remarks, Levon, I'm going to turn the gavel over to you and I am going to depart the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, could I make just a couple of comments related to the feedback from council or from the commission members?
Yeah, please, Sean.
Peter makes a great point. And what we have, our intentions with the CIP are to develop a, a complete program. As he mentioned, it seems like we do the same thing every year. And we're trying to make it so that it, it does look out three, five and 10-year periods. So we're, we're not back here, I call it Groundhog Day. And a lot of the projects that are on this list have been carried forward for three or four or five of these meetings. And, and so to be able to see the full programming without, without years is important. We've begun to do that. We're trying to get our hands around this, this CIP and this budget cycle. But our intention is to come back with the CIP committee and develop that longer, longer view. One other point, and I think Alan and Peter touched on this, maybe some others. Between now and the beginning of the fiscal year, we'll, we're going to have our project managers for all of these projects, develop project data sheets or cut sheets. So that every project on this list will have the information that's critical to know. Where is it? What are the limits of the project? Where did it originate from? When did we start the first step? And what is our anticipated timeframe for the programming? So you'll have a sheet on every project. And what we'd like to do is develop a CIP dashboard for our website so that anybody who wants to have access or review that information will have that capability. And so we're working to roll that out and develop that information. So I want to make sure the commission knows that we're actively trying to deliver, I think, against some of the comments that were brought up today.
Thank you, Sean. I, I certainly appreciate that. And that's why I know it's interesting to try to balance the priorities with projects that are important and those that have safety issues attached to them. And that's why I'm so interested in the fire hydrant program, for example, along with many others. And I have a question, I guess, for either you or Jeff. With this last year of 13 to 14 months or so with the pandemic, how has the budget been affected by carrying out some of these projects?
Well, I can, I can try to speak a little bit to that. I'm, I'm not the finance person here, but we initially had programmed about six and a half million dollars of new money into the CIP. You may recall, we had a lot of big projects, Little Country Celebration Park and a few others that were kind of in the middle of the, the project on the pandemic hit. So we had a pretty sizable backlog of CIP projects that we're executing. And we were purposeful in only adding about 6.4, 6.5 million in new projects to the CIP. That's about half of our typical annual average. But our, our financial picture was better than we had anticipated. And council approved a budget amendment here in early March to allow us to execute some additional projects that we feel are important. So we programmed, council programmed a little bit more money back into the CIP. And we'll see projects like the Shelter Cove Enhancement Connectivity Project that will improve conditions along the waterfront from Shelter Cove Community Park all the way to the, to the Sheriff's Center. Kind of a teeing up the Chapel Linear Park project that we'll begin to execute here shortly. So we, we were able to infuse some more money in the CIP. And so I think we were, our financial picture is much better than we thought and we were able to execute some of these things sooner rather than delay them anymore.
So that does help in as far as maybe changing priorities and moving things up on the priority list, such as the Main Street Road, which is another issue of, of safety concern. So hopefully that's, you'll be able to move some things around and move them up the list. I know it's tough because we look at all the projects as being priorities. But to be able to kind of balance that between, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that. And I'm glad that we live on Hilton Head where the budget is still being able to fund a lot of these projects. So thanks to the community and thanks to your good work as well. Teresa, do we need to go back through the roll for another round of questions? Or do any other commissioners have any other questions for Jeff or any other comments?
We could go through the roll if you so desire, or we could just do some general comments if any commissioners have them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's appropriate to take a motion. It appeared that the commission sort of concurred with the list. There's a motion to recommend that list up to council. And then you can capture, you can capture additional comments as you go through the roll. I know that Mr. Perry and Mr. Alfred may have some potential conflicts, one with the RIC Center, one with the Arts Center. And so give them an opportunity to make that statement before a vote is made.
Okay, yeah, so it's trying to move us forward. So, so at this time, I guess I could ask or entertain a motion to accept these projects that have been presented by staff for the CIP fiscal year of 2022.
I would so move, Mr. Chairman, with, with one caveat. As Sean Cullen just mentioned, as Secretary and Trustee of the Arts Center, any action that I do has to leave that organization out. So I move to, my motion is to approve everything, but I have to recuse myself from approval of arts, of the Arts Center point.
Okay.
I would second the motion. This is Scanlon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alfred. And I have a, a second for Mr. Scanlon. And at this time, I would entertain any other questions or comments from the commissions. Okay, hearing none, are we ready for the vote? Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. O'Neil?
Approve.
Mr. Perry?
With the exception of the Island Rec Association, since I am a past president and on the executive committee, I will recuse myself from, from voting on that issue, but I do approve everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
With the exception of the Arts Center, as previously mentioned, I approve.
Okay, and I know that the chairman, Christian, had to leave. So we can't count his vote or I guess we just accepted his comments, right?
That's correct.
All right, well, I think we're in a very good place. And we had a motion, a motion and a second, and we've had the vote and it's been approved unanimously. I want to thank Jeff Bucklew and the staff at the town for, for their good work in these challenging times. And thank all the commissioners for, for your support of moving these projects forward. Okay, Teresa, I do not have the script in front of me, but I see that the next item on the agenda is commission business. Is there some commission business before us?
No, sir, I believe there's no commission business at this time.
See, I would have a question that may or may not fit into that category. But I'm just wondering as to where we are now in terms of planning for virtual meetings going through the summer? Is there any plan yet to come off this or a date certain that we're going to stay on it until?
I think that's a good question. If someone from staff can...
I'll, I'll try to handle that. We, we have not yet determined, and, and the rollout will occur at council initially when council makes a decision to come back in person. That'll be the, the initial effort. And then, just like we did when we, when we started the virtual meetings, we would have a rollout for our primary boards and commissions, which would include the Planning Commission, BZA, DRB, and then a rollout for, excuse me, the secondary boards and commissions. We have, we have not yet determined what that schedule is yet at this point, but we'll, we'll let you know as soon as we know.
Thank you, Sean.
Is, is that influenced by the state as well?
There's no state prohibition at this point. I know some other communities. Uh, there's no state prohibition at this point. I know some other communities, um, in the area and, and within the state are starting a rollout. But we need to get our council, uh, comfortable with in-person meetings. And I think because they're, they're the, um, the executive board, so to speak, once they make a determination that they're ready to meet in public, then the remaining boards, committees and commissions would follow suit, using a rollout schedule.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Uh, any other questions from the commissioners at this, at this point? All right, our chairman had to excuse himself, so, uh, Teresa, as far as I know, we don't have a chairman's report.
That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, any of our committees that are represented, uh, we have any reports from our, our committees? If you could, uh, Teresa, maybe help me with calling, make sure I don't overlook.
Yes, of course, of course. We have, uh, Commissioner Scanlon for the Comp Plan Committee.
Our plan is done and an award winning.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Perry on rules of procedure?
No, no report.
And then we have the CIP Committee, which we just passed here, and the Gullah Gichi Task Force.
Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for April the 5th. And, uh, we're excited because we're so close to, uh, getting some of the pieces of our recommendation moved forward. I believe they're still resting with the Public Planning Committee. So we're excited about being that close and we're certainly anxious and, uh, watching, uh, with bated breath, uh, the performance of our, our, our town council members on that committee and town council as well.
And then we do have the LMO Committee. However, uh, Commissioner McGowan is not in attendance today.
Okay.
So that concludes committee reports.
Very good. Thank you. Um, the next item I have on the agenda is staff report?
Yes, sir. And Siren, uh, for the record, um, we have a, uh, public project review application for Ford Shell Ring, uh, on the next meeting on April 7th. And we're gonna have at least two agenda items for the meeting on April 21st. Thank you.
Great. Thank, thank you, Ann. Uh, are there any other reports from staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, if all hearts and minds are clear, I think we're at the end of our agenda and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Chairman Perry, Commissioner Perry. Yep, and second by Mr. Alfred. And, uh, thank you guys for your, your work. And, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the public and certainly our town council members, we appreciate you being here. And everybody, have a great day. Stay safe. We find ourselves...